All right, it is 6:30. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the October 25th meeting of the Willetts City Council, and we're going to start with a pledge to the flag. Jerry, could you lead us?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong here.
Present?
Stransky?
Yes.
Present.
Yes. Are we going to have a feedback loop all night? Okay. All right. We'll start with public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. If multiple people would like to speak on the same subject, I may appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, its commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The city council can take no action on non-agendized items. Would anyone here tonight like to speak on a non-agendized item? No?
Yes.
Yes. You can state your name at the podium.
Good evening. I'm the mayor of the city council. My name is John Kavaznikah, and I would like to talk about vending or vendors on the Main Street corridor. I know you guys have all heard it before, and the topic was, well, it's been brought up a lot of times. But I'd like to see if the city council couldn't revisit the ordinance that was voted, I believe, and put in place but not recorded, if I understand it correctly. Is that about right?
We didn't change the ordinance yet. We had committee level meetings.
Uh-huh. I mean, wasn't the ordinance voted on and accepted to circumvent the 1929 ordinance that's in place? That's not true?
No, I think what we had is the state, right, came in, Dusty?
I can provide some clarification just then, Mayor.
Would you like to hear Mr. Kavaznikah from Dusty?
Well, yeah, sure. Because that's kind of where I'm getting my information anyway.
Okay. So, Dusty, if you could grab that mic.
That's not plagiarizing what he says anyway, so.
Just a little clarification.
Yeah.
You're doing fine. So, council may recall, the July meeting in 2022 brought a little bit of recap on the current regulations and some of the past work that had been done by a previous makeup of councils. So, back in 2014, May 28th, 2014, city council meeting, the council at the time had heard some recommendations regarding modifications to the city code related to food vendors such as food trucks. And ultimately, that council did provide guidance to staff to make certain amendments to the city code, one of which was to prohibit peddlers, food trucks, from operating on or within one block of both Commercial Street and Main Street. However, as reported out at the 2022 council meeting, staff failed to follow through on that direction, and so those provisions were never officially added to city code. So therefore, as John was referencing, we still are relying on a 1929 code section, which states that peddlers, which food trucks would be considered in that definition, cannot park upon Main Street, meaning they're prohibited from parking upon the street, but they're not prohibited from parking on lots adjacent to the street, provided they meet the other criteria in the temporary land use section of the city code.
It's not limited to just food trucks, it's limited to vendors in general, right? I mean, it could be jewelry vendor, a fruit vendor, a DK vendor, that would interfere with existing brick and mortar businesses that I think should take precedent over vending, you know, what it's like to do business in this town. It's not easy for anybody, and to have that competition that can just up and move if business isn't good that day, you know, where brick and mortar, we're here, we have a commitment to the community, we're obligated to be here. And, you know, sometimes nobody walks in the door that day, but we're still here doing business, paying taxes, volunteering in our community, giving services and food and everything that people come to you for free, you know? And so I just would like the council to revisit that and put that, I guess, recognition or ordinance into play. Can I just get it?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for listening. Good evening. Thank you, Dusty, for the call.
Is there anybody else here tonight who would like to speak to? Yes, please come up and state your name. And then you, Virginia. Virginia will be after you.
My name is Robin Leeler, and I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but you just said I want to add something to that, that I remember a time, probably 10 years ago, when Pete Swanton had his Main Street music on the other side of the street, and all the places were empty around him, all the stores, and he felt like they needed to fill those spaces and get more people on the street. To have a thriving downtown, you need several places that people want to go to. You need at least five places that are open after 10 o'clock at night, if you want night business. And his landlord told him that he was going to actually keep people from renting those other spaces around him so as to reduce the competition. And Pete said, "No, no." He goes, "You fill those spaces around me, and you can double my rent, because I'm going to make more money." So I just want to take that into account, too. It may be different between filling brick and mortar neighboring buildings and having street vendors. That may be a different thing, but I just want to add that as something to think about. The more businesses you have somewhere, the better everybody does. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Virginia Stransky, former, I think I've served on every committee, and this one included. And I'm sorry, I cannot roll all the tapes back far enough, but in the late '80s to beginning in '90, when I was on the council, Bruce Alfano was on, Eddie Scott. Anyway, we did have a peddler's permit, and you had to come to City Hall, and you had to bring your ID and your information, and they had permits at that time. And when there was Joy and Joyce of Cooking, Joyce of Cooking over in the Van Hotel, and they were the first ones to get upset, because a group from some church, some group or something, came into their store and kept interrupting because they were selling pictures so that they could take a trip to another country. And so all of this began about that time, and Bruce and I had a very healthy disagreement. He thought $10 was ample for that permit, and one day, and I said, "I beg your pardon, I think 50 would be a better reality," because at that time, I was in the Victorian, and I said, "Probably," I'm looking, maybe, a little exaggeration, but I said, "I'm looking at $3,000 a week, a month, or whatever, to open my business, because we put money into it and into the community, and I just feel that they should be." So, a couple came in when I also owned the building at 75 South Main Street, and I hadn't seen them for a long time, but a young man came in, and I was working with a client, and I said, "Excuse me," to my client, and I went over and I said, "May I see your city permit for what you're doing?" And I said, you know, "I just need some identification," and he said, "Excuse me, ma'am, I'm gone," and walked out the door. And that was in 2013. So anyway, that's my whole story, but there has been this conversation for years, and that was the main problem. I don't know about the side street vendors, I haven't dealt with those, but we did deal with them when we had a business in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else tonight who would like to speak? Yes.
Good evening, council members. Cherry Ward, Solid Waste of Willets. I've got a couple items. One is, I guess, sort of tell you the rumors are true, that we are selling our company to, we're selling the assets of the company to a company called Redwood Waste Solutions. They're also the hauler in Ukiah, Fort Bragg, and Lake County, and the unincorporated areas around Fort Bragg and Ukiah. They're also one of the largest garbage companies in the United States, being, I think, third size, called Waste Connections. So with a heavy heart, I'm here to tell you this, because I just need a new chapter in my life to move on, but we have met with staff and provided the information, and hopefully we'll be providing more to staff. For, I'm not sure when it's going to be presented to the council for the assignment of the contract, but we'll be working towards it here soon. The other item that I want to say is, for the month of November, we will be collecting green waste, mixed organic waste, every week for the month of November, as we have in the previous years. If need be, we'll continue on until December, if our drivers need to continue. That's something that I want the community to know, we're going to do that. Any kind of things that we've developed over the years, I'm pretty confident that the new owner, Bruce McCracken, who will be the division manager, has been a friendly competitor of mine for the last 30 years. He will be doing the same kinds of things that we've been doing, so I'll be there to remind him of all these little details, too. But I want to thank the council, and hope, as you mentioned, some previous council members, including her, that I've worked with for the last 53 years. It's been quite a journey, and we've developed, I think, a pretty good program here in Willets, and as you're going to hear about, we've already been doing a lot of that work, and I'll be here tonight to help out if need be. But we've developed a pretty good program here in Willets. I think we should be very proud of our recycling and garbage services provided here. We've been very progressive, and we were the first to do lots of things. I can go back to early 1989 to do first curbside recycling in the county, so I was very proud of that, but because of the council's support over the years, and the 11 city managers I've gone through, including maybe you one day. So I wanted to say thank you again, and I'll be around whenever this comes forward for the transfer and give more detail about the company and what we're planning, what we're doing. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I just add that I do believe that Solid Waste of Willets has been, for decades, one of the jewels of our business community, and what you have grown, your treatment of your employees, the services you offer to our community, makes me proud as a fellow business owner and as a resident of this town. So thank you for all of your years of service here.
Thank you.
You'll be greatly missed.
I was going to say the same thing. And all the extra services and support that you've provided to the community over the years is just amazing, and we will definitely miss you a lot.
All right. Anyone else with a non-agendized item they'd like to discuss tonight? Do you receive any emails, Dolores? All right. We'll close the public communications and move on to public matters. We do have an update from the Little Lake Fire Protection District. It is a written update. I'm trying to think if there were any highlights I wanted to share with you. The fire department answered 49 calls during the month of September. They also have been working hard on some grants to supply needed equipment to their department. They have undergone some extra training, including lithium battery training, and they are still training on their new Type 6 brush truck and engine 5469. If anybody would like to read the full report, it is on the city's website under tonight's agenda. We also, tonight, under public matters, have a quarterly update from the Willets Chamber of Commerce, and I believe we have two here tonight.
I'm Susan Mahoney from the Chamber of Willets, Chamber of Commerce in Willets. I first want to apologize to the council. We had planned to have a PowerPoint presentation for you about our signage project with Karen Mattson, and our graphic designer is behind schedule, so that's been rescheduled, I think, to December 13th, and that may work out better, because we are going to have public review of the various signs that we are proposing in busy places, so that people can have a chance to comment on, give us some input about it. So at the December 13th meeting, we can provide you with some of the comments that we've already received, and I believe they'll get the information ahead of time. Is that right? Yeah. So, okay. So first, I wanted to just bring, make sure that everybody knows about two public service events that occurred in the last few months. One is that the city of Ukiah is now the state-designated California Welcome Center in Northern California, and with a hint of jealousy, I congratulate them, and I think that it's really going to be a great thing for tourism in Mendocino County as well as for Ukiah. It's right there next to the Chamber of Commerce in the conference center, and they have staff available at all times to give out information to people who stop and inquire. So I think that's really a good thing for all of Mendocino. The next is that I just want to make sure everyone is aware that Amtrak has changed their policy. I think that they fought with Greyhound for a while, and they finally were able to push it through. They have Route 7, which runs from Cal Poly Humboldt all the way to Martinez. In the past, you could buy a ticket anywhere along the line, but you had to, your end had to be at a train station, a rail station. And now they've won the right to go from city to city, so it's as if it's a Greyhound bus now, you can buy a ticket from here to Garberville. But the difference is that the Amtrak runs every day, and the Greyhound only runs a couple days a week. So just make sure that everybody understands that when we have people looking for buses to get, they don't just have to take MTA or Greyhound. So I wanted to start with, the last three months, the chamber has included ribbon cuttings at the Montree and the Main House, and we have a number of mixers coming up that I just wanted to make you aware of in case you felt the urge to join us. It's November 3rd and November 5th. The 5th is going to be held at the Little Lake Cemetery, and it's stone stories, very interesting presentation by actors of the person's life who was interned in the cemetery. So it lasts about an hour and a half, and it's put on by the museum in conjunction with the chamber, and they will have actors in period dress and some anecdotal things about the people there. So it's an interesting history walk through Willets, and that's on Sunday the 5th. So in July, in fact, July 1st, the chamber participated in the Willets, First Willets Art Walk. I didn't feel it was particularly successful for the chamber. We were right in the middle of East Commercial. It was very hot that weekend. It was right in the middle of Frontier Days, so I think people were just worn out by everything. We had very few vendors. It was too hot to really even set up on the asphalt of the skunk train. So it, for us, it didn't really go over that well. I think the museum had activities going on, and of course, the art center. So at the ends, they had more participation, but right there in the middle, we really didn't have very much at all. So August was the ramp-up planning for Harvest Moon. It was a great help to partner with the city and the Little Lake Fire District. The city handled the details of the road closure, special thanks to Taylor, who jumped in on that, and all the signage that was required. That process is now mostly in place, so that any other, any other group could go ahead and make plans to close Main Street and can follow that footprint now, kind of jump through all the hoops. And so I think with a bit of tweaking on the traffic plan, that it's going to be fairly easy to get it all set up for other events. The Harvest Moon was a happy and successful affair, based on turnout, and Danley's enjoying the day. I would again like to thank publicly Marie Blancus, Maya and Fiona Valley for guiding me through all of the intricacies and helped me through my first Harvest Moon. I look forward to working with them again next year. They put in countless hours on all levels and just really pushed it through. So chamber plans are in the works for the rest of the calendar year, including more mixers. We are doing our Shop Small Day. We have not decided if we're going to go ahead with Friday. It is supposed to be Saturday, but most people go out for the big Friday thing, and so we may be doing that on Friday instead of Saturday. That's to be determined. And then in December there, we're also working with a number of groups to try to join with them with some of their plans as well. So all of that is in the works, so we'll be pushing through the end of the year with as many events as we can. Of course, there's always work going on in the background. I'm always at meetings, whether it's city or museum or just our own. And then we're discussing signage and getting out more into the community to try to boost up our membership more, so that when, almost a year, more than a year from now, when we're charging dues, that we can get enough folks. We anticipate some folks won't want to pay dues, and we'll drop off, so we're trying to get more in there, so that we can get going in January 2025. So we have lots of work on over the next month, and look forward to returning a few months for another report. Any questions for me?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
As a retailer, I would love if you did Shop Small Saturday. The combo punch of Black Friday plus Small Business Saturday is a boon for our business year after year, and if they were combined on Friday, I would worry that Saturday wouldn't be as strong as it has been historically.
Well, taken. Thank you.
I was thinking the same thing.
Okay.
What's the mixer on November 3rd?
November 3rd is a ribbon cutting for the old Thrive Yoga. It's in the same building, but it's been taken, that business has been taken over by someone else. It's called Flourish and Flow Mendo, and it's more of a wellness, fitness twist, but it does also do yoga. So she wanted to get going. It's newly opened, and I said, "We just have a mixer," and we're going to have another mixer, so we're right in the middle. So anyone could just stop by and wish her well, that would be great.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to the first reading, an introduction of an ordinance adding the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction to our municipal code. I believe we'll hear from Kayla.
Yes. Did you have a free presentation? Do I have the mask over? Oh, it's actually a different. All right. Hope I don't hang up on Brad. Chair screen. Windows?
And then the content.
There we are.
You might have to.
My eyes aren't the best. All right. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, my name is Taylor Perry. I'm the senior city planner for the community development department, and tonight I have a proposed ordinance for your guys' consideration titled the Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance. I'll likely refer to it after this as ordinance, because it is quite a mouthful. This addition to the Wilts Municipal Code is essential for our city to maintain and meet compliance with Senate Bill 1383, or SB 1383. And it's important that I emphasize that this ordinance is not enforcing any new regulations. These regulations have been enforceable for quite a while now by CalRecycle, and many of the mandates set forth in Senate Bill, or SB 1383, are already being met. SB 1383, also titled California's Short-Lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Law, is the most significant waste reduction law that has been adopted by the state of California in the last 30 years. It was signed September 19th, 2016, and what the law does, it establishes methane reduction targets for California to reduce disposal of organic waste in landfills, including edible food. More specifically, it sets a rather ambitious goal of reducing organic waste to the landfills by 75% by year 2025. There was a goal for 2020. Unfortunately, we did not meet that, but we're still trying for 75% reduction. This Senate bill further mandates a requirement that jurisdictions providing solid waste collection and disposal services, including our city, implement an ordinance that allows us enforceable powers, because we are the enforcing agent, regardless of how well Jerry and Solid Waste of Willets does in taking over responsibilities of meeting requirements for solid waste facility. We are the enforcers, but without an ordinance, we cannot do so. There we are. The California Department of Resources, Recycling, and Recovery, also known as CalRecycle, is the governing agent of SB 1383. They oversee a lot of different programs and policies, including organic waste recycling under SB 1383. And to support jurisdictions and other entities that are required to abide by SB 1383, they have offered a model ordinance, which is what we've used to write the ordinance you have in front of you. The language of the ordinance has also been catered to local conditions, to regulations set forth in our Wilts Municipal Code, and is catered to the services already offered by Solid Waste of Willets. There is an addition in front of you that was not included in the original packet. It's a brief, small section titled Self-Haulers Regulation, and it's fairly simple, straightforward, but I do have a summary in case you haven't had a chance to read it. It sets forth that self-haulers must separate recyclable materials and organic waste on site as per local regulations. It also says that commercial self-haulers, including multifamily residential generators, which is also defined as commercial in the ordinance, for the sake of simplicity, they must maintain records of the organic waste they deliver, self-hauled to these facilities, so receipts, recipients of where they self-haul, and if possible, the weight of what they drop off. It also states that residential self-haulers are exempt from all the record-keeping requirements. Right now, we do have a low-population waiver that exempts us from this record-keeping requirement, but that exemption is set to expire in three years. So it's in four years. Thank you, David. So it's important that we have this language in our ordinance for when that waiver does expire. So, moving forward, I guess this is the table of contents, that instead of going through the entire ordinance in its entirety, I figured I would indicate where that extra excerpt will be going in the second reading. So to comply with SB 1383, there are quite a few programs that the jurisdiction must implement and maintain, many of which we've already started to do, or in partnership with Solid Waste of Willets, we are currently doing and happening, such as the mandatory organic collection services to residences and businesses. We do, or Solid Waste of Willets preciously provides a three-bin system for solid waste, recycling, and mixed organic waste. And I believe mixed organic waste is collected on a bi-weekly basis, along with the recycled materials. There are, as previously stated, there's also the option of self-hauling to supplement, but you are mandated to have that service, and I believe it's a free service when you sign up for Solid Waste. Another requirement is establishing an edible food recovery program. We've already began some outreach. We have two identified Tier 1 generators, Safeway and Grocery Outlet, who are building officials, the building department, and community development have already engaged with and notified the letters. Our, I wouldn't say our program is in full swing yet, we still have some work to do. And up until a proposed ordinance, we don't have authority to enforce it quite yet, but that is, it's in its beginning, early stages. We will also come January 1st, 2024, Tier 2 generators will have to comply with SB 1383 requirements. There's only one that I've identified that would potentially qualify as a Tier 2, and that would be under the large event for Frontier Days. I believe it exceeds the number of occupants, so that might trigger Tier 2 requirements, but we're a pretty small municipality, so it's not, that's okay. So we don't have too many Tier Ones that are subject to these regulations. We also must be conducting education and outreach to the community, which is imperative for residents to be doing, pending staff time and additional funding sources, such as social media posts, flyers, newsletters, of that sort. So more work to be done. We are also subject to SB 1383. We have requirements that have been designated for the City of Willes procurement requirements. The CalRecycle designated us for approximately 1,500 cubic yards of procurement on an annual basis. There is a phased approach, so this year we'll have to procure 65% of that allocated amount, and next year it would be 100% of that allocated amount.
The "we" you're talking about is the City of?
The City of Willes, yes. There are multiple options as to how we can reach that goal. One of the, I guess, quick and dirty ways of doing it, or the simplest way, would be to purchase mulch or compost and then either use it where we could, although 1,500 cubic yards is a tremendous amount. Likely, we would give it away. That would help us meet our goals, but there are different methods that we would like to look into. Again, that type of thing costs money. We also have to do some planning. We have to do some capacity planning as well. So a lot of these things, we have already began the process of, but there is so much more work to do. And like I said, these types of things cost money. Fortunately, with the adoption of this ordinance, it opens us up for an opportunity to apply for SB 1383 local assistance grant funding. It's a non-competitive grant funding source. They essentially, well, if you meet all the requirements, one of which is having an ordinance in place that enforces SB 1383, they pretty much, oops, sorry, they give you about $75,000. All of which could be used to pay for procurement, for outreach and education opportunities, for capacity planning. So it's a pretty imperative thing to allow us to be in compliance. But we would hope to identify all of the things that we intend to spend that money on if we get to that point and utilize your consideration and thoughts for that. But in essence, that was my short and brief presentation. That's the end of it. So thank you for your attention. And I'm here, Davey's here, Dusty's here. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Kind of trying to play devil's advocate because I'm sure that there'll be folks, whether it be big, large committee organizations that may find themselves required to do certain things, or businesses are required to do certain things. I guess to reiterate, this has already passed. It's something we have to do. It's not something we can just say we're not going to do. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we have liabilities, we have responsibilities, so do generators, so do Solid Waste of Willes. All of these regulations are already in effect. We just don't have enforceable powers or opportunities to dive into outreach and education for community until we have an ordinance in place.
And does this mean code enforcement would be the one issuing citations hypothetically to folks?
Correct.
And then lastly, most people can relate as an individual, so we're already throwing things in the green bin and doing that kind of stuff. Does this require us to do even more? And I'm just saying that figuratively for the public out there, but.
Yes. To put shortly, there would be, not an audit, but as part of those inspections, we would be taking a deeper dive into looking at how residences, businesses, and the community is doing as far as sorting. There's also a component in which the City of Willes would be enforcing for local businesses to educate their employees and for multifamily complexes to educate their tenants. So it's multifold, but yes, there would be a little more work involved.
Because I know the majority, I guess the majority of our residents are going to be single-family dwellings and then obviously businesses and the apartment complexes, they'll have to have a mechanism in place, and that apparently will be our education component. But for the average Joe out there, I guess that education would also require them to do more.
Yes.
Than they're doing now.
I'd love to hear. Suprema, and then Madge.
Couple of things. I was surprised that there's funding with a new mandate. So often, we get mandates and no funding source. So that was nice to hear, Thea, that there's finally some funding for a mandate. I'm concerned about the, I get that if I'm an individual, I've already got my waste bin at home that I can use. I thought it was interesting, you said we'd be taking a deep dive for inspection. So I was thinking, does that mean that Davey's going to come out and inspect and make sure that I put my waste, enough waste in each bin? I hope not. And then as a business owner, I'm wondering, you know, how are you going to quantify how much, yeah, within the regs, I just, I don't know how you're going to quantify and be able to regulate how much is going to go into each bin. It seems odd.
Yes, I'd like to respond if I can. So as far as the inspections go, the intent is not to perform inspections on residences or residential houses. We would be inclined to inspect Tier One and Tier Two generators, so businesses and multifamily complexes, we would be doing inspections pending funding for those, but not for residences. For residential uses, for the average Joe or the average Willes community member, we would be inclined to provide them education materials and hope that they would do their due diligence in reducing the amount of organic waste that they could otherwise not put into their trash bin and otherwise put into their compost bin. But no, we wouldn't be auditing residences. And the second part of your question is how, how do we calculate this to do our enforcement? I won't, I can't say it's going to be a simple task. Part of the reporting does ask that you measure what's diverted in tons. So there is some math involved, and for the average person, it would be a bit of a learning curve, to put lightly, but it is, it has been in effect for quite some time. We have been doing our reporting, and so far, it seems to, it seems to be that there are no issues with our reports. It's getting done. We have been submitting those reports. I believe Jerry's been assisting with those. So it's not going to be easy, and it does require staff time.
I'm just going to express that as a business owner, I'm a bit frustrated because California keeps giving us a mandate, a mandate. I think there, just about every week, I receive some kind of state mandate, and this just seems like one more mandate. And we hear about how businesses are leaving the state of California, and yes, there's always some good behind it, but when you mandate things, you know, it creates this huge layer of cost that drives businesses out of business. So I'm a little disappointed, I'll be honest, to see another mandate.
Just blame me, Taylor.
On behalf of business owners. Yeah. I would not want Davey's job.
Madge.
I was going to ask Jerry to comment on what your experience is and what our track record is so far, because you do know this stuff.
Well, I'm here to give you a lot more information, and it's not as bad as it is. Obviously, we've been doing it. The county, though, with the benefit of hiring a consultant out of, I think it was Newport Beach, they redid their franchise agreement for area number two, or excuse me, area number one, which is North County. It includes the area around the city of Fort Prag, excuse me, the city of Willes. So we have been operating under that agreement, and within that agreement, we're required to do 1383, we're required to do 1826, 326, I believe. And what the county has done within that agreement, and I gave a copy of the agreement to Taylor to look at, that I think the City of Willes should implement, provides all the documentation you need in order to meet these goals. Obviously, Solid Waste of Willes is doing it, but what the county is doing is it making us do all the work. But we report to them, and then they report to CalRecycle, which will be the same thing. We could be reporting to your staff, they then report to CalRecycle. But 1383 is just mixed organic waste, which we've been doing since 2015. Yeah, there is Tier One, which Taylor said that there are two people that are there. There's a Tier Two, which is the Frontier Days. We have a form, because we have concerts out in the county, and we have a form that we will be giving the Frontier Days to fill out, and where they're going to provide their green waste, where they're going to provide to the recyclers, and then we provide the bins for that. So it should be a lot easier. But there again, it goes through us. Back to the, there's waivers on certain places, like if there's a apartment complex that has green waste, but they have an outmanscaper that comes in and takes it away, hauls it to us, they just fill out a waiver. We have that on file to present to staff, which we presented to CalRecycle. Really, some of the other things. 13, or 1826 requires that any commercial account with two cubic yards or more of service has to have recycling services as well as green waste services. So if you don't have green waste services, you just fill out a waiver form and we submit that. So it's not making it mandatory. In regard to checking on residential, yeah, we have to do, we have to provide a list of our routes, and within that route, we have to, we have to inspect 10% of that route for recycled materials. What it is, it's called a flip-the lid thing, where our staff would go out and check to see if anybody is putting contamination either in a green bin or the red, blue bin. And we have a, our guy then would provide an oops tag if there's some material in there that doesn't belong in there, or there's a good job tag that we leave to the customer as well. But again, it falls back on us to do it. We would then provide that to your staff, and they can report that to CalRecycle. So if you, if we, I'm not sure when that, I provided that contract, and hopefully, we can present to the council in very near future. It'll cover all the things that we've talked about tonight, and it puts the onus on the hauler to do the work and report to the, to your staff. As far as public education, we have websites. We can drop things in our mailing for letting people know about these services. It'd be helpful if the city then does, once in a while, throw it in their billing as well, maybe a little brochure of what recycling is and where it needs to go. For self-haulers, we're mandatory, they're mandatory, when they get to the transfer station, they have to pull out their green waste. We're informing of that. There's a brochure that we hand all our self-hauler customers to let them know about 1383. But there's more than 1383. There's four or five, you probably have heard of them in Hempswell, but there's a lot of them, and it's all incorporated into that franchise agreement. Now, the other thing that the county did, which is fine, they want me to pay a quarterly fee of $3,000 a quarter. Now, they did allow me to raise the rate to cover that, but it was to allow me to hire a compliance person to do the reporting and the inspections and stuff like that. Now, we, the city could look at that and say, here, we'd like, we'd like, for our time involved in this, we want $1,500 a quarter, $1,000 a quarter. As long as you let the hauler raise the rate to cover that cost, we can do that. I have here for Taylor, too, is our second quarter report to the county that provides all the information that we're doing in the county outside Willes. And this is a report that you would typically get from us for the City of Willes as well. It's pretty in-depth. And again, back to, yeah, Dusty probably loved to know that we do more with Davey, but it really falls on us to do it. We're the ones out there. If we can get that incorporated in the contract, I think it'll solve a lot of problems. But yes, we have been doing 1383 for a long time, since 2015. Again, that progressive nature of us providing these services, we were the first to do that. As far as procurement on compost, we, the county worked out a deal with Coal Creek Compost. If they, when they signed their agreement, they have to give back so many tons of material to the county. I think we could work that deal out with Coal Creek as well, that they give back 1,500 tons or whatever the number is. I think they would be willing to help out on that as well. Lot, lot of information, I understand, but we're doing a good job. Taylor's doing the good job of getting in compliance, but it really is going to fall on Solid Waste of Willes, and we're already doing it. So we just have to do inspections.
I have a couple of questions. When is, will the new owner?
Well, they're already. They're already doing it for the unincorporated area around EK and Fort Prag. They've already done three reports.
So they'll do the same?
They'll do the same thing. They've got a compliance person, Michelle Goodman, who might have met at Hempswell. She's the one that does the reporting, and she'll just incorporate it into the Willes plan.
And then approximately, where are we in percentages? Where we're supposed to be at 50%, now at 75%?
You know, Madge, I have no idea what that number is. It's really confusing to.
Yeah. And compared to what? Is the starting date from 2014 or what?
Yeah. Well, it goes back to AB 939, which was in, what, 2019, 89 or something? It's, I don't know where we're at. We're just doing the best we can.
They have this yardstick, but you don't know where the starting point was.
Yeah. They tell us, I know we've been in compliance with the 50% in the past, but I don't know where we're at today.
Okay. One other question. It sounds like you only have two Tier One businesses, the two largest grocery stores, and one Frontier Days for an event. What about, do we want to try to leverage things like the hospital and larger restaurants and?
Schools.
You know, other, yeah, and schools? Or is that, that's not covered specifically, or is that something we'd want to, at least do more education anyway?
If you don't mind, the schools are going to be covered?
Davey, you need to be at a microphone. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
So the, so the schools are going to be covered, and we're going to be sending out letters in the next month or two to talk about their program. They should have already been notified by the state, to be aware of this already. We're just going to help educate them, make sure the process is done correctly. Our hospital doesn't fall under the requirement, the hospitals go by number of beds, and that's pretty much where we fall as a community, is we're very small. So, you know, none of our restaurants seat over 500 people. That's the limit. So, I mean, the goals are really high, and most of all of our community falls under Tier Ones, 10,000 square meters or larger. So that's kind of what Mariposa calls off in. And the nice thing about our community is a lot of these people, you know, they're already doing a lot of these things already, you know. They're doing edible food recovery, you know, as you know, with Safeway and Chris Real and Mariposa, they already do a good job of trying to get their edible food through the food bank and these other places. So all we're doing is just educating, making sure the process is done correctly, and documenting it, and correcting action that's not right there, and then so we can actually get that documentation recorded on correctly. So a lot of our communities are already doing the right thing, or is making sure that they continue and step up a little bit more. Did that clarify the?
Yes.
Tier One, Tier Two a little bit?
Yeah, thank you.
I, okay.
Want to state that there are businesses in the public who have green waste, so we're encouraging them to use our green carts rather than a dumpster, because if we have a dumpster and only we have two or three dumpsters out there for like the schools or something like that, we got to go all the way out there, pick up those three dumpsters, and then take it back to the transfer station and dump it, because we can't contaminate it with other materials. So like Mariposa Market is one of our customers. They have about six or seven green waste carts packed there for their, for their food waste, and we pick that up on route when we pick up the green waste. So we're encouraging businesses, if they do want to have their food waste, small amounts or something, then we'll just give them a green cart. So like Mariposa Market is one of our customers, they have about six or seven green waste carts packed there for their, for their food waste, and we pick that up on route when we pick up the green waste. So we're encouraging businesses, if they do want to have their food waste, small amounts or something, then we'll just give them a green cart. But there are like, Restaurant El Mex is using, I think they're taking their materials, I've always talked to them about, take it to a pig farmer, where some, some pig farmers come in and take some of their food waste. So as long as we know that they're not putting it in the trash when we do our inspections, it's fine. So there's a lot of good ideas out there, people are using. But this bear in mind, it's going to be carts, because we just don't have enough volume using dumpsters.
So I wanted to say a couple of things. First, when I was first seated on council five years ago, we had weekly green bin pickup. And shortly after I got on council, you came to us and explained that it wasn't cost effective for Solid Waste to Willets, because unfortunately, the majority of our residents were not taking advantage of that. And so it was cost prohibitive for you to send out a truck and send out a driver to go down a street, which maybe only had one or two green bins at the most. So you asked us to reduce to every two weeks, and the council agreed. I got an earful from a couple of gardeners who depended on that weekly green waste, but I think everybody sort of got used to it. And you were gracious enough to give a second bin to many of us who asked, I have two. And that definitely helps bridge that, you know, two-week gap. I wonder if with more education and more push to have more people utilize the green bin for food waste, is there a possibility that we could at some point go back to weekly green bin pickup for our community? That's my first question.
Well, it's working so far. And if I think if we do do more education, and it does require us to provide more and more green bins to people to get through two weeks, we'll look at that. I mean, I certainly would think the new hauler would look at it. We're the only, well, there's not a lot of green waste collection in the county because we're exempt from a lot of it, just the cities. But I guess the answer to the question, yeah, we could, we could look at that. We're just trying, we were picking up every other week, because we put the recycling up every other week. So we have the same driver doing green waste one week and recycling the next. That was the purpose of it. But if it gets out of hand and we're giving customers like you five or six bins, I think we better revisit it and maybe look at that. We're all going to do it weekly because of the dropping of the leaves and pruning and stuff during this time of year. Let's see where it goes first. I think it's something we need to bring up again in the future.
Okay. My other question is about the food waste. So in my household, we typically don't want to put stinky food waste in our green bin to sit for two weeks, so we'll bag it and freeze it, and then the night before the green bin, we take it out and empty it into the green waste. Not everybody has freezer capacity to do that. And I've talked to a couple of restaurants who would very much like to do food waste recycling, and they do the same thing, but they run out of space. And they're certainly not going to leave food from their kitchens in a green bin for two weeks in front of their business, because it turns into a maggot soup, and nobody wants that. A couple of businesses told me that they had bagged things up in compostable bags, and then were told by Cold Creek Compost, they don't accept those, that it gums up their system. So in effect, what we have is a couple of restaurants who would very much like to divert food waste from the trash stream, and they're not doing it, because two weeks is too long for pickup. So I guess my question is, I know, I talked to Davey about this earlier, and he was going to look into the compostable bags, whether or not Cold Creek actually accepts those. But is there, is there some potential solution for the restaurants who, you know, are so small that they don't technically have to do as much diversion, but would like to? Is there, I mean, my hope is that with this approval, we're not just giving it lip service and doing the required thing for state, for the state, but actually trying to find solutions for those progressives amongst us who really do care about keeping this stuff out of the waste stream.
Can you have them call me?
Absolutely.
The two restaurants, talk to me personally, and we could go visit their site and just talk to them and see what their situation is.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Davey, were you able to find an answer to that from Cold? Okay, all right. And thank you, Jerry.
It was actually a question for Jerry. I think I've actually seen your guys handing out the notices on occasion as I've driven by, so I got the impression that there's probably a camera on your, on your trucks that catches some oops maybe. And I think one day I saw somebody pull over, looked like they saw something, and then they came out and they wrote a tag on a, and left a note for somebody. Is that correct? Is there a camera that they?
Well, you can see it sometimes on the lids, obviously a plastic bag, a blue can. Card, you know it's contaminated, but yeah, they can see it when they dump. But I will tell you that the new company will be, will be purchasing all brand-new trucks for Willets, and there will be cameras in the hoppers. They have them in Ukiah, and they do, they do, and I, I don't like their technique, but they, down there, they'll, they see something, they automatically send a charge to the customer. And I don't like that. I want to see at least a three-strike rule, where the customer is warned two or three times before we actually send them a bill for the contamination. Because there is a lot of contamination, people, people don't do the right thing, whether it's a green bin or a blue bin. But I know that those cameras are going to be installed there, because it is a problem that we need to, we need to really do more education on with the people, and once we find it. So yeah, and there'll be cameras, we already have cameras in the front and the back, and we'll have cameras facing the driver, which they're not happy about that, but that's a liability issue, insurance issue.
Like I said, I saw somebody writing a note to somebody, so I assumed that there was some.
We want to, we want to call it an oops tag, you know, instead of, hey, you're a red tag, you're in violation, and make you feel like you're going to go to jail.
Would the three strikes versus immediate red tagging be maybe a negotiation point when redwood comes to council?
It does, it does. We, I think if people, I mean, most of the time usually hit them in the pocket, but they get, they get the, the idea what needs to go on. But in the case here, we know who's predominantly putting contaminants, contaminants in their, in their deal. And we got to the point where they're, over the years, we've actually told people, we're pulling your cart, because you're not doing the right thing here. It just isn't worth it. We have a 21%, 22% contamination rate at the Mirth. 22% of what goes in there goes to the transfer station. That's just too much. But every Mirth in the state has that same contamination ratio, so we need, as a whole, need to do a better job of it. I'm not talking about the green waste, just basically the blue can. And I don't know, everyone wants to get down to the lowest can possible, because it's all based on that size can, because everything else is free or included. And so they run out of room in their 35-gallon carts, so they throw it in the blue can, because they've got more room in it. And we got to put a stop to that. But yeah, I think we could negotiate that.
I just would hate to see our residents, you know, get red tagged without any warning.
No, I think it needs to be.
It seems like we could ease in a little.
Yeah. And I think we'll have that conversation with the new owner about that, because I've got friends that live in Ukiah complain to me about, they got a $5 charge or a $10 charge for a bag of, bag in their recycling cart. And I go, well, that's not the way I would do it, but there again, that's the way they do it. Maybe it works, maybe people get the, get the word out that they're going to get charged.
I was just going to say, I think one oops tag is enough, and then, and then enforced, because when the dollar signs are attached, then they take it seriously. So I wouldn't give them three, three chances.
But remember that we have to do 10% of the routes anyways, so they're going, we're going to be out there before the truck does and looking, flipping, and making documentation what we want.
I do think people tend to get really lazy about that. Even, you know, some old enlightened people just throw strikes in the wrong bins all the time.
I'm thinking I need a camera on my trash can, because on Commercial and Main, people walk by and throw their garbage in your can all the time.
All right, so I think this counts as our first reading of this ordinance? Is that correct?
I recommend that we have a motion, actually, to approve introduction of the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction ordinance by title only, without further reading of the text.
Okay, would anyone like to move?
I so move.
Would anyone like to second?
I will second, but with the same sentiments the Supreme has, that we have enough regulation, but I know that we have to do this, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Taylor, did you have any other comments to make?
No, I was going to maximize Brian.
Okay.
Did we ever ask for any other comments?
Oh, yes. Is there any public comment about this proposed ordinance? Yes, Susan?
I'm wondering.
Oh, if, sorry, at the, for the TV, you got to be at the microphone.
I'm wondering what accommodations are going to be made in the Brooktrails area, particularly with organic food now in the bin, biting bears along the regular harvest. Is there going to be particular?
There, wait, there's no requirement for green waste in Brooktrails?
Okay, okay, then.
Any other, any other public comment? All right, I will close the public comment portion. We have a motion on the table and a second. Dolores, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mariposa?
Yes, thank you. And we'll look forward to the second reading.
When will that be?
November 8th meeting.
Okay, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Okay, so that finishes up our public matters for this evening. We have no ordinances tonight. We do have a consent calendar. The only item on our consent calendar this evening is the city council meetings of October 11th. The council will take action with a single motion and roll call vote. Any comments from council about those minutes?
I would like to move and second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody from the public have comments about the minutes from the last council meeting? Nope? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have a roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mariposa?
Yes, thank you. Monthly activity reports, these are items that do not require action by the council but are of public interest. We have the September 2023 Business License Activity Report, as well as the Building Permit Activity Report. Anybody who would care to see those reports is encouraged to go to the city's website. They are listed in the agenda packet under City Council Agendas. We have no commissions, agency, or authority reports today, so that takes us to item eight, our city manager reports and recommendations. Brian?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I'm recording from about 6,200 feet in the snowy areas, so at least the signal is chomping out, that's a good thing. So far, a good conference, I had a good session on public engagement and how to follow up on that. I'm going to reach out to the design team, get some additional information, it was a very good topic. But I have a spot at hand tonight. I just want to say, to begin with, on the East Commercial Street, we had those two open houses last Wednesday. I want to thank all the members of the public and stakeholders and interested parties who attended the sessions. We received a good number of quality feedback, comments, suggestions, things that we need to look at. We were schooled on the proper etiquette of pickleball design, of course, of design. So I think that was really important. One of the things we were looking at in the original schedule of the project was to present our findings from the open houses at the November 8th meeting. Like I said earlier, as we had a good quality of comment, we want to, we want to shortchange that. So looks like we're going to delay that at least the December 13th meeting. Taylor and the design team had some good suggestions, and I think Lomani as well, to introduce a second public engagement, and that one would be tailored to school-aged kids and parents and teachers, which a lot of the recommendations that are in the planning documents are tailored for youth in this community and their guardians. So we want to make sure that we didn't lose sight of their comments and their suggestions. We value them as well. So we're looking to schedule a, fold into the project schedule, a second public engagement session, probably at a school. We may not have the design team from terrain there, we didn't budget an extra trip for them. We may just have basically the same instruments that we had, the same board, some public comments, and do that in-house. So, good session. Like I said, we're probably going to lose about a month or so in our original project timeline, but I think that's fine. You know, we're still making progress and rather include the comments to that full extent than not lose sight of them. So, on closing note on that, you know, October is the National Planning Awareness Month for the American Planning Association. The city of Willets did our bid, hold that, with our last, last session's notice of the Caltrans beautification grant and our public engagement scales with this last project. So I think we covered those bases and are proud of the team and moving forward with those items. Taylor, do you have anything? I know you kind of set through the sessions and you helped facilitate them. Anything that, and maybe you attended the project recap meeting yesterday, which I had to miss.
Just briefly. Thank you, Brian. You did a good job summarizing the East Commercial Open House, so I don't think I have anything more to add than that. Although there were about 45 people that signed in, so I'd say that's a really stellar turnout for that type of event. We did have a meeting with Preston, our representative for the Clean California Grant yesterday, went really, really well. It sounds like we might be getting the restricted grant agreement sooner than we had anticipated. It was originally per the grant outline, scheduled for March of next year, 2024. He said as soon as possible, so hopefully we'll get it. He has his fingers crossed that it'd be next, well, by the end of this year. So no promises, but that's exciting. They also have some plans up their sleeves for coming. We don't have a date set for it yet, but what Clean California does is a lot of outreach on their own. They've asked that any post regarding the Clean California Grant, we tag them and they will happily share with their 200,000 followers. So I don't know how they're doing it, but I need to take tips from them on how to get more followers. They also have a service to where they can come to your community and do a promo video. They have their own equipment and their own quasi-director, so we'll definitely be taking them up on that. No ideas yet. He mentioned in the last video for Riodell's Clean California promo, that the mayor, several members of city hall, and then council members attended and made their own, their own appearance in the video, so we might entertain that, depending on what your guys' ideas are. But yeah, things are moving swiftly, and we hope to get that, that restricted grant agreement by the end of this year.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions on the Commercial Street project?
Just that the community is very, very excited about it.
Thank you. I know staff is equally excited. You know, maybe I'm biased, but getting engaged with planning projects and looking at visions to the future and, and more importantly, you know, programming projects and then making them happen, that's really, it can be tough for us, but it's a challenge I think we're all ready for.
Brian, I wanted to add that there have been a couple of grumblings from community members who are concerned that the focus on East Commercial will make our town lopsided, and they're hoping for more planning efforts for the south end of town. And I just wanted to stress, I have said to people who have said those comments to me personally, I wanted to stress that much of this planning effort was in response to community requests for increased safety on the East Commercial Street corridor, particularly near the ball fields, where there's so much activity with students, kids, and families. So, you know, just because the city is working on planning in one area of the town, doesn't mean they're neglecting the rest of the town, but this was a community, a community priority for a lot of people who use the ball fields on a regular basis. So I think the city should be proud of its efforts to improve the East Commercial Street corridor, and I really appreciate the efforts of the community development department to that end.
I just wanted to also comment that it's really exciting that it's not just a plan, but that we have this grant funding coming in, where we're actually going to implement specific parts of that plan. And as a former city planner myself, there's so many plans that get put on the shelf and then that's the end of it. And it's really exciting that we got this grant funding to start implementing the grant and doing what our mayor is pointing out, the safety improvements. Thank you.
Yeah, once again, I mean, my bias is if I can, you know, recruit about 30 different planners to implement things, you know, give me that green light, we'll see what we can do.
[laughing]
Maybe we'll work that one into the next budget cycle. We'll keep doing that. Another update, I'm just gonna tee it off a little bit for Walter. He's been heavily involved, but once again, West Mendo project has been moving along rather well. No major obstacles that we encountered the last three Saturdays that we had the contractor out on the scene utilizing lower traffic and especially reduced traffic going in and out of the school was very beneficial. It was a good decision. The project, like I said, has not hit any major hurdles that prevented it. Schedule looks like it's gonna wrap up maybe sooner than later. That's a good thing. The contract has been very good to work with. Everyone on the team has been very, very good to work with. You know, I give, you know, recognition to Walter. He jumped in on the very, very deep end and literally on his first day in the job with the city. He was out there managing the site and working with the contractors and working with, to then at Fall 3, who's also, like I said earlier, has done a great job in facilitating and representing our interest as the client with that project. And then ultimately, I said this at staff meetings and at discussions with staff, that you learned a big lesson on public engagement and rolling out notices and messages to the public on projects. And like I said, that's like, when I said earlier about looking at the session that I had earlier today regarding public engagement and what's the strategy. You know, I think what we need to do as an organization is get out of the mindset of just checking the boxes for grants and other programs when we do public engagement. It's not a one-and-done type of deal. We need to follow through and make a commitment that when we did receive comments, that we act on them. They may not be something we like, but will respect that and work that into the best of our ability. So, the project, like I said, West Mendo had some challenges, but you know, the team that was associated with that and also Chad Monger at Laco overseeing the design aspect of it and kind of being our facilitator with the contractor on engineering and construction practices, also has shown his worth in the effort. So Walter, do you have anything you wanna add to those comments?
We'll be done actually two weeks ahead of schedule, three weeks. We won't be getting to the November schedule. They originally thought November 22nd, but there's a little bit of adverse weather right now. They're finishing up with some of their paving patching, and they'll be done with cleanup and demobilizing the site soon. We did have some comments and stuff, and I wanted to address those since we're gonna talk about this with Councilmember Stransky about, there was a concern about some of the ADA improvements, which will be actually part of Phase Two, and I can address those if you wanna talk about that and everything, what your concern was.
I think that people ought to know in the community.
Yeah.
Why they paved, did not do that.
It's sequential. The underground, this was, Phase One was the underground portion of the project. That has to be completed first before we can do Phase Two. Phase Two's gonna include resurfacing that area. The road's in pretty bad shape, and upgrading all of the, a lot of the curbs and sidewalks in that area, and bringing some of them to up to ADA compliance. So it's just sequential. The underground portion is first. Phase Two will include the other improvements afterwards. This has to be completed first before we can move on to that.
So just so everyone is clear, the concerns that Councilman Stransky had are that a couple of the corners had regular curbs poured without handicap ramps. And one in particular is in an intersection where there are handicap ramps on three corners, and now a new corner that's a regular curb with no ramp. And my understanding is the reason for that was that not all the sidewalks are complete, so you don't necessarily wanna ramp going to an area that's dirt and not a sidewalk. But Mr. Stransky's concern, reasonable concern in my estimation, is that ultimately what that means is that when we get to Phase Two, we're gonna be jackhammering newly poured curb, which seems like not the most efficient use of taxpayer funds. So just wondering if in the future, I understand the sequential need for phasing, but how do we better plan our plans so that we aren't going back and redoing work that was just not?
Right, and that's not even completed work. So the curb he's talking about is on Spruce and West Menasino. There's, all the concrete that was poured is in conjunction with drain inlets everywhere where the drainage is. It's not in a corner. It's coming close to a corner, but it's not in the area where eventually we will have to put, there's an open corner there. We have to put in a curb so that the water drains into it right now. That one is not planned yet for a handicapped access because on both sides, there's dirt on both of them. We don't even know if on that one street on Spruce that we can put a sidewalk there. There's easement issues and that we'll be looking at. Anything that comes out in concrete is gonna be very minimal. Right now, the concrete had to be put back in place in a couple of areas so that the proper drainage could be gone. It could be helpful and stuff until the project goes through second phase. So it's very minimal, the amount of concrete coming out and everything. This concrete that got put back in is for drainage purposes right now and everything. So, yeah.
I understand the explanation. I just think for, maybe for lay folks out there like myself, who don't understand all the details of planning, it does, it does seem a little counterintuitive to see full curbs poured where ultimately the community would expect to see a ramp.
Yeah, there aren't full curbs poured. Like I said, it's just for drainage purposes and everything. And on the, on that intersection of Spruce and West Menasino, there's actually four corners there. Only one is actually ADA compliant. The other two have ramps, but they're not compliant, neither the sidewalks. And those will eventually get redone. The one that is poured was part of, like I said, a drainage box that's there that had to be formed, the drainage box and everything. If we do cut anything back on that one, we might cut back a foot just to lock it in, but there's very minimal concrete that's going to be wasted at all and everything. There was a corner poured by the contractor at Easy Street that he had to pour the full corner in because he damaged it when he took out a pipe. And again, it had to be put back into place as it was until we can do that part of the second phase of the project. That's not gonna cost the city anything more. It had to be still functional until Phase Two, and it, that was on his cost. He didn't, it's not gonna cost the city anything more to take it out or put it in and everything. So there's no cost there. And I have pictures, if you wanna see that and everything, that shows the extent of how much we did put in, in concrete. It's very minimal in those areas. And it's not gonna impair much. It's really not that much of an extra cost at all that the city's gonna incur when we go to Phase Two.
Larry, did you have any additional questions or comments?
No, just that we have talked about this, and he has one opinion and I have another. And so consequently, we'll just see what happens. And Phase Two happens, I hope it happens in my lifetime. Thank you very much.
Well, it will. It will. You'll be around for a long time, and it's gonna happen sooner than you think.
It's gonna have to be to see it.
It was a good question, and you gave a very good descriptive answer that I think is going to explain a few things to people who didn't understand it. I didn't fully understand it.
Right.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Like I said, I can pass these forward if you guys wanna look at this. This just shows some pictures if you wanna look at that.
Sure, you can pass it up if you wanna look at it.
I just wanna add to that, like you said, Walter gave a pretty decent recap of why we, how we scoped and programmed the project. And I just wanna comment on that expression about waste and inefficiency. If we actually merged two projects, at least in a partial street connectivity or sidewalk connectivity with this project, it would've got more complex, more expensive, and more time involved. We made it very simple. We focused on the drainage, and that laid the groundwork, or the footing or the foundation as we moved forward with supplement work. So I would like to say that we were sufficient. We used the public funds to our best of our ability, and we had a very tight scope. There was no additional work that was gonna be added on that was gonna add complexity or bring more, you know, more items to the table that we weren't prepared to do it right now. So we had a tight scope. We purposely did that to keep it within the budget that we had and set the framework for when we move forward with Phase Two, potentially at Phase Three, as we scope the future.
Can you remind us of the potential dates for Phase Two?
Change Two is to be determined right now. We have two human preservation projects that are in line for going into early '24 and into maybe summer of 2024. Maybe we're gonna have designs for that, Phase Two, mid-year '24, so maybe construction in '25, or late '24, '25, depending on how far we do with the street rehabilitation and adding pedestrian elements. Cause we are, once again, the council has made it very clear that you wanna see complete streets implemented, and that is a prime example or an area of this community that would be served well by a complete street program.
Brian, may I put in a plug for a wish that any portion of Phase Two would happen during the summer when it's least impactful on the schools, and a big push for making sure that that could happen in that timeline?
Yes, we would definitely look at that as, you know, least impactful for the school. This one got pushed a little bit further into the timeframe, which we did not want to do, but going forward, we're gonna be very cognizant of that and nature.
And just so you know, you know, despite making that comment, I do greatly appreciate the fact that this project is wrapping up ahead of the timeline and I have heard-
Ahead and under budget.
And under budget, and I have heard from several residents that they are very happy and pleasantly surprised by the lack of disruption that this project has created in the neighborhood. So I do, I do wanna make sure that staff hears those, those thanks and appreciations.
Thank you.
And just on that, staff, extend appreciation to the school district and the residents and the property owners who had their inconvenience in their existence for a couple of weeks. We appreciate it. We'll work around that. You have concerns that you noted about scheduling. We'll do a better job, do a better job with getting the notices out there, but once again, I think we've learned and we're gonna get better at it.
Suprema, did you have a comment to make? I think you might've had a different experience than I did.
That's okay.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
Nope. I just, on the radio ground, just want a quick note on that. I see Davy's in the audience there too. I just wanted to bring this up, especially since we had that ad hoc committee with members of the council and the wealth fundier Dave's board and the award of that contract. We have, once again, not experienced any problems with demobilization. They've been busy at the scene, at the site. They're trying to work around the weather limitation, and they're also moving ahead and hoping to get the project done within the timeframe, maybe a little earlier. I think it's gonna be problematic in getting materials. Do you have any comments on that, Davy?
Davy is not here.
Davy has left. That is my update on the radio ground. We have, Davy's gonna be up there on Tuesday. I asked him if he was gonna, if they were gonna have, if he was gonna encounter any issues, then let me know, and I haven't received any. So we should be moving along. The contractor has been good to work with, getting their contracts and coordinating with Davy.
I met with DMR builders and checked in with them. Everything's going smoothly according to schedule. They have no issues at all. Things are all going according to plan. So, yeah. The weather's the biggest hindrance right now.
Thank you. Anything else, Brian?
One last final thought on there. I just wanted a quick note. I wanna thank staff and the people who have promoted that windmill, pinwheel, pinwheel project that we have at the Highway 20. I'm pleasantly surprised. It is amazing to gain that. It is, it fills a void in our community, and I hope that we can do more. I know that the mayor has asked me and said, you know, is the city ready and willing to accept the project? And I would like to say yes. Just bring it forward, and we'll see how we can accommodate.
Thank you. And just to piggyback on that, I would like to say that the unbelievable and never-before experienced happened when I posted on Facebook about the new art installation, the pinwheel. There was not one negative comment. Total shocker. So thank you to all the staff who worked on, on that. And of course, a huge thank you to resident Jane Camp, who made that generous donation to our entire community.
I think it's really neat.
Yeah, I think so too.
You told me it was moving in your text, and I, as I drove back into town from my conference, I was pleasantly surprised it was-
Yes, it really was.
Yeah, it was moving.
Jane had expressed an interest in maybe doing up to five of them, so I hope that she's still interested and we'll see some more art.
Yeah, yeah. Wonderful. Well, thank you, Brian, for your report from afar.
Thank you. Let me go play the snow now.
Soon, very soon. All right, that takes us to item nine, which is Action Items, Department Recommendations. I understand that this item, the Personnel Policies and Procedures Update, has been tabled per staff request. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, so we expect to see that at the next meeting? Or maybe?
We're on last legs. We did have a partner of, Leader Castney Whitmer, reviewed our policy and some additional edits made by IDPD. And we were supposed to meet on Monday, but I had your duty, so that's been pushed to Friday. So I'm hoping to bring that to project with LCW. You're gonna have to go back to IDPD and gain some more additional input and see if we can-
Thank you. All right, that takes us to Department Monthly Reports. We receive reports in the packet from each department head at the second meeting of each month. We'll start with Kathy at the airport.
Hi, I'm Kathy.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy from council? Okay, we'll move on to Community Development. Dusty?
Thank you, Mayor. Just the, the soap opera, the twists and turns of building a straight trail continue. But the, the good news is whenever sort of an issue arises, we're finding solutions. So we had a positive conversation, meeting with Fish and Wildlife staff on Friday to move forward our permit application with them to support the trail project. I think, as I reported in the past, we do have a budget shortage, and we're looking to, we've completed a grant request and submitted to the State Coastal Conservancy, and we're expecting affirmation of awarding us another $3.3 million to support that trail in November. So I very much look forward to hopefully sharing some, some good news on, on that front and continuing to meet the goal of hopefully beginning construction next spring. General Plan Land Use Element and Sphere of Influence Amendment, working well with our team on, on that project. They provided an update of the administrative draft responding to staff comments earlier today. And so that puts us probably on a timeline to have a public draft completed and available for the public, probably mid-November, along with the EIR that's being developed concurrently to support that project. So that's good news. You'll notice in here, we have entered into a contract with BPR Consulting Group to provide additional capacity for building plan review services. So sometimes we get some rather extensive specialized projects. The new hospital would be an example. We have one of the largest cannabis manufacturing facilities in the state is here. There's a lot of specialized equipment, and so this group would be available to support those types of special inspections. If we have a staff member who's out for an unforeseen time, this would allow us to bring on that service and support meeting our timelines for building plan reviews. Or if we experienced, you know, unexpected, you know, level of building permit submissions or something, again, this is a group that, that we can rely on to, to help us in those types of situations. And while we're not currently looking to hire 30 planners, we are looking to hire one additional city planner. Yeah, I said, yeah, yeah. I also have a bias for, for planners as well. But anyways, we're looking to up our effort to recruit a new city planner to, to join our team up there. So very much looking forward to finding another good person. And so far, our best luck has just been posting an ad on like a telephone pole in Brook Trails. All, every one of us that works at the department lives in Brook Trails right now. So, anyways. Appreciate council's support of the ordinance tonight. We'll look forward to obtaining those grant funds and allowing us to help implement SB 1383. And I share your sentiment, Councilmember Rodriguez, in that it's nice that this mandate comes with some opportunity to get some funds. So that was appreciated. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Dusty. Any questions or comments from council?
I've had a few public inquiries. I've had a few public inquiries about the vacant buildings, and I'm just wondering if we have any update. We've noticed that there's one or two that are vacant that seem to be maybe becoming available to the public, and where some people have asked if that's a push from the ordinance that has to do with vacancies. And then also, are we seeing any progress on some of the, the ones that have been a little bit more difficult?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can't for certain say that some of the businesses, empty spaces that are being activated are a direct result of the vacancy ordinance, but it does seem to be pushing some folks towards spending some additional time and energy in, in trying to, to make use of their spaces. So it's not hindering that effort. And then, yeah, we do have some, continue to have some longstanding chronic vacancies within our community. And, you know, at least one property owner continues to be difficult to, to work with. But staff is taking the necessary time to remediate that situation. But nothing, nothing that I can report that's definitive at this time.
It's been several years now since we passed the vacancy ordinance. Have there been any fines levied against any of the property owners who leave their buildings chronically untenanted?
The, the vacancy ordinance is pretty forgiving for the, for the first few years. But, yeah, there, there is, there are some buildings that are beginning to face some significant fines. But also, part of the process requires us to access the building to determine its condition, and we have some owners that are refusing that. So there's, there's ways to make that happen, and we're in the process of doing that. And upon completing those inspections, there are certain things that they're required to do, and if they don't do them, then we are able to levy code enforcement procedures outside of just the registration fee that's tied to the vacant building ordinance.
Thank you. I, I do want to mention that I have heard from a few people in the community about how fragile businesses are right now with the downturn in the economy and worrying about the, you know, if, if the message really doesn't get out and people don't shop local, you won't have brick-and-mortar businesses. You will have more vacant buildings in the Willets community, and people really need to take heed of that. And, you know, when you can, shop, shop local if you want to have them available. And I know that sometimes, there, in the past, we've had a situation where a business, particularly that was a good tax supporter, had moved out of the community. I was just thinking back to when Councilmember Gonzalez said, "Did we reach out to that business before they made the decision to move?" And I'm just wondering if we should consider talking to the chamber, or if that's something we should be doing ourselves to maybe, to those businesses that we know may be fragile? You know, somebody had asked me the other day, we just heard that in Cloverdale, I believe it was, that their movie theater is closing. And our movie theater is still here, but I think it's fair to say that, you know, there are probably not too many steps from the possibility of closure themselves as we see the, you know, the change in that industry. And what a shame it would be to see something like that go away and then to have one more big vacant building. And I'm wondering what we proactively can do to, to kind of look into that and find creative ways to support maintaining some of the businesses we have. And maybe it's not through the city of Willets, maybe it's through some partnership, but maybe just exploring that the next time we're meeting with the chamber even? So, yeah, just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else for Dusty. We'll move on to the Finance Department Report. I don't see Manny here tonight, so I guess you're-
Just real briefly, I'll, I'll just pitch it for May. Again, the big news is that the 2021 audit is essentially done. And the positive news on that is the books came out positive with a small surplus. There was no problems with any of the fund balances or any of our accounting practices that were identified by the auditing team. Manny will present a full summary at the November 8th council session.
Thank you. Great. All right, so shall we hold our questions then for the November 8th session? If anyone has any questions tonight, they're welcome to ask them, but it sounds like we'll have more answers then. Okay. I just have comments, but I'll hold them. Okay. All right, we'll move on to the Police Department. Chief.
I don't have anything specific to add to the report, but I am more than willing to answer any questions that you and Paul may have, or, or comments, or direction.
What is, any message to, I know we've got Halloween coming up next week, any kind of extra law enforcement that will be out there, safety tips, things like that, since we have the public that's listening?
Well, obviously, the, the safety tip ideas, dress in brighter colors, stay in lighted areas, and parents pay particular attention to what treats your children are getting. And for those of you, parents who have teenagers, try to pay attention to the tricks that they're preparing for as well.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions from council or comments? Do you have any?
No, I was just going to say, thank you very much, and very good report, and if there's anything we can do, let us know.
Most certainly. I very much appreciate the support that we've received so far.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Services and Facilities. Matt Walter.
Hello. So have you read this? Do you want me to read through all of these?
No, you don't have to read them, but if you have any additions that you'd like to-
Yeah, no, what we do have in additions, the crews have been really busy clearing trees, leaves and stuff, getting things winterized. There were some other trees that were added to this that were hazardous trees in front of Kelly's. They did a great job pruning those back. We'll have a report next month. One of them may have to come down. It's, it's damaged the trunk and everything, so we may have to do remediation and take that one out. Like I said, a lot of prep work for winter. No, everything on monthly achievements, project updates. The only thing I can add to that is that we are getting involved in getting the old dump site off of Hurst-Willets Road, doing the winterizing up there. There's some repairs to do that we're jumping into with our contractor. Nothing on staffing or budget. Let me get over to Utilities. Utilities has been very busy.
Walter, may I ask a quick question?
Oh, yeah, please.
I know that I will get this question from the public if the tree is taken down there in front of Kelly's. Is there plans to plant a new tree?
We would, we'd replace it. It would be a much smaller tree, and then it would have like a three-year period where we'd have to water and stake it. It would be very much different in size. One of them there, the trunk is severely damaged, and when he pruned it back, it's got some damage that will impair the safety of the tree going forward. And it might be better to do now during winter to take it down while it's less, fuller in size, and that it wouldn't need as much water, the new tree going in. So, and we'll have a report for next council meeting on that.
Thank you. I have, once again, received comments from some of the neighbors around the school street parking lot. There was a tree in that parking lot that was removed due to, I think it was sick, damaged, and it was never replaced. That was some years ago, and I've mentioned it a couple of times to Kenan, but residents in that area still would like to see a tree replanted in the parking lot.
Okay, yeah.
And that's right on West Mendocino.
Okay.
Near the charging stations.
Yeah, especially front and center like that. If we did take that one down, we would replace it with a tree and try to get as big as one possible and stuff to get it established.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah.
Can I ask a question? While we're still on the public works, sort of stuff-
Yeah.
I was watching the news today, and they're talking about maybe another webinar. Are we good on sandbags and all that good stuff?
They just ordered 5,000 new sandbags to augment what we already have. So, yeah, we will be. We'll probably set up the fill station like last year. Last year, I know we got some, some resources from the county, find out if we're going to get those, too, and set the sandbag station up. Apparently, it was very successful. People really utilized it, so-
I think it's become kind of a tradition. We've kind of filled the gap that sometimes the county didn't, and I'm not sure if we shamed them into it, but they ultimately became a part of it.
That's good, yeah, but it was highly utilized. People appreciated it, and we heard about, yes, we won't be setting that up again, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to contribute on that. The, the county does recognize that some of their residents do access that fill station, the bag fill station, and they do contribute material to it when we do make a request of them. So they recognize their obligation.
On Utilities, you see the report, there's been several fire hydrant breaks. Crew and staff have been really receptive. We've had a lot going into, out of summer. You typically have a lot of ground shifting, and they've had even one today, a water line that they had to replace over on West Mendocino, and jumped on that right away and got it done. There is a leak that was occurring over in front of the AutoMart, and we had Whip dig that up, and when they did, it was discovered that the pipe was not the same size as on the maps. It was much bigger in size. The company that's going to be putting in the new valve there, it's called Tapmasters, they do it without disrupting service, but they had to order a much bigger valve, and that'll be coming in in about seven to nine weeks. And so, right now, it's functional and it's, it's, it's working, but sometime in December, they'll be opening that sidewalk up again and replacing that. It's a day-long project, so we have that up and coming, and that's pretty critical. It'll give us another valve to isolate some of the other areas later on for repairs. So it's pretty important for the infrastructure. Also, waste treatment, on Friday, one of three water pumps went, treatment pumps went down. It's one of the older pumps, yeah, do you have a number three pump?
Number three pump, the one on the-
Okay, out of four, okay. It's one of the oldest pumps. The staff has been working hard to get parts for it to keep it up and running right now. It's down completely. A replacement pump is seven to nine weeks out, which is actually very good out of Sweden, a flight pump. And so they're going to try to keep the old pump going or have us have a, a trash pump there and stuff in case and stuff we need for high water flows. So they've been working hard on that to keep that maintained and going and everything right now. And getting the waste treatment plant ready for winter and emptying the ponds and clearing things up there, so, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council regarding Utilities?
You said Sweden?
Sweden. The flight pumps come from Sweden. Yeah, they're the best pumps. They last longest. This will be a big improvement. This pump is 20-plus years old that was there, so it's gotten a lot of use, and this will be, the new pump will last a long time. They're, they're, they're the best pumps you can buy for waste treatment, yes.
Thank you.
And so it's been, it's on its way, yeah.
Thank you. All right. I think that wraps up the Department Reports. Once again, thank you to the department heads for taking the time to put those together. They really do, I think, impress upon the council how much gets done by all of our, all of our talented city staff, so thank you. Moving on to Item 11, City Council, Announcements, Communications, and Reports. Madge, have you anything?
There are several meetings coming up, and I don't think I have anything new to add to the report.
Okay, Suprema.
MTA met today at 1:30 in Ukiah, and probably the two things that are of interest, one was the 11.2 million that we, that MCOC received for transportation through SB-125. And deciding on the funding for this is happening very quick, so as Chair for MTA Board, I, myself and Jacob, the Executive Director, met with MCOC staff last week, and we looked at all the criteria of what we could use the funds for, and then we gave the MCOC staff some direction. And so today at the meeting, we presented to the whole board the direction that we gave and received full affirmation of the, that they were in agree, agreement with what we had proposed, and that was that we spend approximately, with those funds, we spend approximately $2 million to purchase up to two parcels of property on the north side of Coles for potential mobility. Oh my gosh, Mobility Center, sorry. And then the second thing was, I had talked before about the mobility solution studies for rural Mendocino County, and there were four cities that were part of that study, Leightonville, Covelo, Brook Trails, and Hoffland. And we looked at those, and we decided that we wanted to tackle Leightonville and Covelo with a pilot program, and we allocated about $600,000 to be able to run a pilot program. We would be using, as would be required as part of that, those funds. We would have a zero emissions vehicle that would travel at least once a week back and forth to Covelo, and it would be like, kind of like a dollar ride type service, so it's not going to just come and go. You would, it's like a, you would, you would call and schedule, say, "Hey, you know the day of the week that it's coming, so you schedule your doctor's appointments that day, and you say, 'Yes, I need a ride.'" So, yeah, we're going to try that pilot program. And then the third thing would be purchasing vehicles so that we can hit the target of zero emissions by the deadline that Dusty has set for us. So we put forth a plan. MCOC staff is busy writing it while we're giving them documentation. It'll go before the MCOC get, hopefully, approved and essentially be allocated before the end of the year. So this is a fast-moving project here. And then, let's see, oh, yeah. The other thing was just talking about, we received the Ukiah Transit Center feasibility study presentation, and we looked at some renderings of what the transit center potentially could look like. So, and then the other thing, oh, did you have an MTA question?
No, actually, I realized I could have-
Oh, okay. And then last week, Greta and I met with the Finance Committee, and couldn't stay for too long, so didn't get a lot of information. For me, the big takeaway was hearing about the audit, and I won't say too much about the audit. I'll save my comments for Manny's full presentation, but there were some affirmations and some surprising information when we heard about the, the audit. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Madge, we'll go back to you.
Yeah, I realized I had to bring the announcements, and I left them at home, but I'm pretty sure it's November 4th is going to be a Hasmobil scheduled in. Okay, I see Brian is shaking his head. So, yeah, November 4th is a Hasmobil scheduled in Willets, and I believe it's from 9:00 to 1:00 or 10:00 to 1:00 at the SWAL facility on Franklin. And it's free for up to a certain amount of gallons of various kinds of wastes, hazardous waste, paint, thinner, light bulbs, all sorts of stuff. There is full information about that at the Mendocino Recycle, it should be at least at their Mendocino Recycle website, and CDS is the, the company that is handling it, and they're putting out notices. So I'm hoping people will take advantage of that and not put any hazardous waste in any of the trash or recycling bins.
I have one more thing. Yes, it's not from the committee, just, just comments. And that's, earlier, we couldn't address the food truck vending thing because it wasn't a gentized item, but now I think it's appropriate that I can add. We didn't discuss the fact that there was a new law that had to do with sidewalk vending, and I'm not sure that, that everybody fully understood that. But I would like to see that we revisit the vending as an ad hoc committee. Maybe for January, we consider putting that on the list of committees.
Yes, I think the new mayor will certainly have direction from council to move forward with that. I know that the idea of returning that whole issue of the food truck ordinance was brought to council by members of the public earlier this year, so it certainly seems past due to start thinking about that again.
Thank you.
Larry?
We, Jerry and I went to the meeting with the Western, where the- where the tree fell on the restrooms in the.
Frontier Days?
Yeah, Frontier Days. And everything worked out, I thought, very well. And the whole group got together very good right off. And I just think that everything worked out really well. And everybody was very happy with what happened to, you know, that we're going to replace it. And it's going to be cold and much better than it was. And that's what we're after. And, but all the people from Frontier Days seemed very, very bad, happy with it. And so I don't know, Jerry has something else to say about?
I think the only thing, we're pleasantly happy that we're going through insurance and everything and that it wasn't. I don't know if they expected to kind of get a hit on the cost. And we were saying as long as we were expecting to hear from FEMA, we're working through our insurance. And so that was the update we gave them. And so I think that's all I had. Walter, unless you had something else?
It's in process with FEMA. They're working on it right now in conjunction, getting all those projects, seeing what they're going to cover with it, yes.
So no, no cost to Willets Frontier Days organization? The city is putting the bill for those repairs?
As far as I know, Ryan knows more about that on the costs and the debts coming out of.
Great.
I mean, we ultimately, we bear, like all insurance claims, we'll probably make a bump in our rates at some point. But at this point, it's insurance and hopefully FEMA plugs in the holes. So I think the issue, and again, we're working with them on getting anything repaired and just think they had concerns as far as their schedule. And it sounded like we were going to be able to get it done before next year, so.
I think they'll be done before the big events, yeah.
Yeah.
Virginia, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did.
If you could come up to the.
Thank you.
We don't typically take comments during the council, but please, by all means.
This is a question for your.
For staff?
Department heads.
Okay, great, great.
It just seems like things get to rolling and it just rolls by my mind. Anyway, two things. One is I want to thank Dusty Doolie for, he must have talked with someone about chopping off a bit of a hedge. A woman ran it very fast, learning how to guesstimating who was on Mendocino. And she came off of school and never looked either way. And she was probably 40. And if Larry hadn't have been watching. And so I mentioned to Dusty that it looks like somebody coughed a little bit. It isn't totally fallen. But anyway, talking to staff, that was very helpful. Thank you. And then the other is, I had spoken to Dusty and to our interim chief, we desperately need a stop sign on Maple and Pine. There are some large cars. Like I said, I always feel bad, I'm not complaining against the neighbor, but there's so many cars. Every family seems to have from one to five cars. And you have to step into the line of traffic there on the corner of Pine before you can cross and go up Maple. And I have a great granddaughter who lives up there. And so I've been experiencing that trip. People think, I guess, that when they stop at the stop sign on Nor, that their car isn't going to get enough oomph to get to the next corner. And they go way too fast up that, too. And so if anybody's seen my great granddaughter, you know that she's just like a little dragonfly butterfly or something. She's always on the move. So I did a lot of bribing to keep her on that yellow sweater until Grandma can get out in front of the truck that's parked there and watch the traffic. But anyway, I would appreciate. And your interim chief said that, I know he's understaffed, that he would take it under concern and get maybe a look up there. Tomorrow morning will be another very busy day. It turns into a one-way street on Thursday morning because of all the trash that are out and the school buses come around our corner. And the parents, I guess everybody's worried that some guys are going to get ahead of them. But anyway, that is a great concern. And when I was down there with Lexi, a couple on the corner, I don't know, there were a lot of little kids. I don't know if they were all of the one family. And I told the lady, I said, well, I'm trying to work on a stop sign for this corner. And she said, please give a petition and we'll fill it up. She said, it is a very bad problem.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. And thank you, gentlemen, for your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, did you?
So council, that item will be presented to the Traffic Safety Committee when they convene in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Jerry, did you have any other comments?
Yeah. In addition, we met, Water, Waste Water Committee meeting met last week. And we got some updates coming on our MOUs. We're still waiting. And what Walter forgot to mention is on that valve that's going to be replaced there next to Auto Mart, that the company that you mentioned, I guess, is able to basically, what's the phrase you used?
Tapmasters, they basically do it without shutting off the water. They're able to bypass it. So we're not going to have to shut off all the customers. It's an in-place valve replacement. It's, you know, a unique technology that they use. And it's not going to disrupt service, so.
I thought that was, I mean, me and Larry said they're going to take a video that they could show us later on.
Unfortunately, since the valve was a different size, we'll have to do the video in several weeks when the valve comes in.
Yeah.
But we may use the technology later in other places.
Yeah, it sounded like something that when they go to work, instead of shutting down water, that this company cannot disrupt service. And it sounds pretty cool, especially for the bigger lines. And they had mentioned at that meeting that they didn't know what they were looking at. And that was the whole purpose of WIF coming in and doing the exploratory before they ordered parts and did that. So that was interesting there. And I don't think, I think that was it at that meeting, I think, right?
What was that again?
At that meeting, I think the only other thing was we got an update on, I guess, that it'll be put out to bid on the, I guess, we're calling it a storage garage out at the wastewater treatment.
Yes, we're looking at that, too. That's going to be going out to bid in a little while, too, yeah. We have a couple of bids coming up, yes.
So that was what we had from there. And then I went to the LAFCO conference in Monterey last week. And it had an interesting story that apparently, they told the story of one place that, in Southern California, that Community Service District had, LAFCO had to kind of rein them in at one point because they, it was a rather fluid area where the Community Service District apparently had their own police car and everything without authorization. The Sheriff's Department shut them down, told them they. So they apparently colored, changed the color because I guess they had the state, or not state, but the county markings on it. So then they thought they were being clever and made it into kind of a Highway Patrol color. And then Highway Patrol had to step in and say, no, that's not okay. And ultimately, they were taking money and giving it to HOA, which apparently they couldn't do and doing some other weird things. And so they had to work. So LAFCO serves a purpose in some places to kind of get them legal, so.
Thank you. I just would like to report on the Finance Committee as well. To me, the most significant thing, of course, was that the 2021 audit is at completion. If we all recall, that was the year of COVID. We didn't have a Finance Director. We had an interim who essentially just kept the city on course. To me, to have ended with even a small surplus is nothing short of miraculous. So I hope we can all feel good that we dodged a bullet there. Those of us who were sitting here during that time really had no idea how the economy was going to shake out, how our city budget was going to go. And the fact that we stayed on course, I think, is a good thing. So there's more to come about that. The other thing was that I think Suprina and I were in agreement. We both expressed a strong desire to make sure that the audits move forward as quickly as possible. We're going to be approaching budget season next year. And for me personally, it's uncomfortable looking at a budget with still two years of unaudited books. So to that end, Manny has agreed, at Brian's recommendation, to potentially team up with the City of Ukiah, who's hiring an extra accountant to help them close out their audits. So hopefully, we can get some help and move forward more quickly. And then we can all make some good decisions based on closed-out numbers. The other, that's it for my City Council announcements. So we'll move on to Good and Welfare. And if no one else has one, I have one.
I have one.
Okay.
You go first.
I just wanted to remind all the women out there, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And our lovely hospital here, Howard, offers mammograms. We have some amazing radiology technicians who make the process as un-weird as possible, if you can believe that. So everyone out there, if you're scared, do it anyway. Feel the fear, protect yourself, and take care of yourself. Your family will appreciate it. All right.
I have, yes, I just wanted to report that the Harvest Dinner that was held at the Grange on October 16th was sold out. It was a very full house. And the meal was amazing, stellar, almost all locally sourced, catered, and a bunch of different cooks and farmers and so forth. All participated and a good time was had. And a lot of money was also raised for the School of Adaptive Agriculture celebrating their 10th anniversary and bringing more local farmers getting trained here locally. And then some of them stay in our community. So it was a really marvelous event.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Officer Gale and Officer Carey, who came to Imagination Station today a few weeks ago. I took my kids over to the Fire Department, like we do annually. And there were, Officer Gale and Officer Carey were there. And they said, you know, we'd really like to partner up and do some things with the schools and the kids here. And they followed through. And today, they came and they read to the kids. They answered lots of questions. And I thought it was, some of their questions were really interesting. Like, they honestly thought that, like, the officers slept in their uniforms and they drove their cars all day and night. And so to find out that they wore pajamas. And we talked about safety. And I'm very thankful to our chief for allowing them to come over and to create this partnership. And it's not just a one-time thing. We're talking about doing it once a month with a focus on different types of safety aspects to it. But I think that it is just really, really important to build those early relationships with their kids. And we don't have a resource officer. But these two officers stepped up and it's just deeply appreciated. It was, it was a nice moment today. And I look forward to many more of those, so thank you.
That actually reminds me that Officers Gale and Carey